Evening, welcome to the March 2nd meeting of Town and Victor Planning Board. Some announcements here, emergency exits to the left and right in case they're needed, haven't needed yet since the building opened, have they? No, I didn't think so. Restrooms are out the door there and to the right, or left rather, either right as you're coming in. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room even if you are a developer and are presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you with the email address and phone number for the planning department. Also on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Please turn off your cell phones. If you have to take a call, please take it out in the hall, and that goes with conversations as well. If you have to talk to somebody here in the room, please take it outside. We'll start the meeting as we usually do with a pledge of allegiance. Everybody had a chance to look at those? If so, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Al moves, second.
I'll second.
Scott's second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence, we've received one from Lynn C. for the Delta Sonic Car Wash, one from Steve Sykes for the Rotatch Barn, one from Jackie Dalton with the Art of the Cell Towers slash 5G, Robert O'Dell with the Art of the Dish at Baker Road, and boards and committees, Dave, anything from Town Board?
Just wanted you to be aware that, yeah, not a big deal, but I wanted to let you know that rec is returning a little bit more normal this year, and we've negotiated a fee schedule with the school district, so we're going to get back to more of our traditional summer rec programs up at the campus, which I think a lot of residents will be happy to see. The pool will probably be unavailable this summer because they have to drain it, do an acid bath, and regrout some tile and stuff like that, so we probably may get a week of the pool, but I'm not planning on that. But I think people are happy to see that there's going to be instruction in classrooms and a little bit more normalcy back from some of our rec programs, so just wanted to share that tonight.
Thanks, Dave. Kim?
So waiting for you to forget me again, because I'm so unforgettable, right?
Apparently.
Apparently. Your next meeting is going to be Tuesday, April 12th, starting out with a public hearing for Crown Castle doing business as Verizon at 90 Baker Road. Applicant is requesting approval to install three antennas and one hybrid cable on an existing wireless facility. Second public hearing will be for Morrison Minor Subdivision on County Road 41. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide a five-acre parcel into two lots to construct two new single-family residences. And Delta Sonic came off your agenda tonight. We'll carry that application over to your next meeting. And then the fourth public hearing will be for Jeff Markin at 6894 Valiantown Road. It's a site planned for the construction of a 36-foot by 56-foot pole barn, which will include four horse stalls. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should mention, Joel Limbeck is not here this evening. He tested positive for COVID yesterday, so he's not going to be sharing that with us. We have a presentation from Town Engineer. I guess Steve Metzger is here for an update of pump station number seven.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Good evening. Steve Metzger, LaBella Associates. Jason Ebs is here with me, and Wes is going to man the slides that we have. So we're here tonight to brief the planning board on an ongoing initiative that the town is undertaking to improve several pump stations, including pump station seven on East Victor Road, and of course, answering any questions about it. Jason is the project engineer, and following my introductory remarks, he's going to briefly discuss the improvements being designed for pump station seven, and we'll talk about the schedule and those improvements for seven. So the overall project involves a replacement of three pump stations. We bundled a bunch of work together that are in discrete areas, but all bundled together under one bid package. The three pump stations are pump station five, Gypsum Mills, pump station seven at East Victor Road, and pump station 11 on County Road 9. And in addition, we'll be adding generators, emergency generators, to four pump stations. Those are 12, 16, 17, and 32. Our estimate for the project cost is about $4 million, and that'll be funded through the consolidated district and involve some combination of existing funds, reserve funds that the town has on hand, and then the rest would be financed by the town. So pump station seven, we brought just a couple of figures to orient everybody. You probably may know where this is anyway, but this figure more or less shows the drainage area, or what drains sewage towards pump station seven. This particular map has the Auburn Trail force main that cuts through by pump station seven on its way to the wastewater treatment plant. That is not a part of, that will not be affected by this. It's just shown on this particular figure. We have another figure that takes it off to provide some clarity, but I just wanted to point out that this project will not impact that. Pump station seven has its own force main that also pumps to the treatment plant. Okay, Wes, can you advance the second figure? Yeah, so this is a little bit darker, but you can see pump station seven is here, East Victor Road, and then there's a force main that extends from the pump station over to McMahon and up McMahon to the treatment plant. So, you know, it's become obvious through the activity in the East Victor Road pump station seven area that there's a lot of development happening, and, you know, we've been watching that on behalf of the town to make sure that we didn't exceed the capacity of seven. Victor Jeep and Blue Mountain Rise, they're both approved and under construction, certainly can be accommodated within the existing capacity. South Gate 2A is approved but not started, can also be accommodated, but that's it. We are not comfortable recommending that any additional load be added to seven at this time without improvements. So the town, knowing the interest in the development of Stone Gate and the 85-lot subdivision, potential subdivision here, as well as South Gate 2B totaling at about 95 units, the town recognizes that action needs to be taken on pump station seven. So pump station seven will be sized to accommodate South Gate and Stone Gate. Is that right? Is that right? Is it Stone Brook? I'm sorry. Stone, too many gates. Stone Brook, as well as other parcels that fall within the tributary area. And what I mean is there are other areas that would drain by gravity towards pump station seven that are not, there's no plans to develop these at this time under consideration by the town, but in the future, we do, you know, we have made allowances in the capacity analysis for seven to allow for that to happen. In addition, the comprehensive plan recommended some greater densities in certain areas, and we have built those into the capacity calculations as well. So in other words, in short, we don't, once we make these improvements, we don't anticipate having to upgrade pump station again in the future. Wes, do you have the schedule or no? I know, I think copies were distributed, so just a high-level discussion of schedule. So we've prepped a map planner report, and we just submitted it to Renee today to get it on the agenda for Monday's meeting of the Town Board, and we anticipate that they will accept, the town, the board will accept the map planner report as complete and set a public hearing for that, and that'll set the whole thing in motion. Some, you know, there's several items on this agenda, but sort of the big ones are the bid opening as laid out for August 5th. We would start construction September 26th. Don't hold me to that date exactly, but, and then the completion of pump station seven, we anticipate would be done by the end of 2022, December of 2022. There will be other work related to the project on other pump stations, and we're allowing another six months or so for that to be complete by June 1st of 2023. So that's what I had prepared for remarks, and Jason, you want to just brief everybody a little bit on what the plan is for the...
Yeah. I think Steve, as Steve mentioned, we did evaluate the capacity at pump station seven, both existing capacity and then future build-out capacity. Based off of that, we saw the need for not only larger pumps, but larger wet well as well, and then also the need to provide a little bit more resilience seed and an emergency backup generator. So essentially, that's the plan. We'll be providing a new, larger wet well with larger pumps and a backup generator and some other site improvements, and possibly the replacement of a force main. We still need to go through some of the evaluation on that. That's all in the cards as part of the future project there.
Thank you.
That's all. We just wanted to brief you on what was going on. Obviously, you have an interest in making sure we can convey the sewage by these new developments, so with that, any questions for us?
Any questions?
Yeah, Steve, is there any need to upsize any of the piping between the pump station and sewage plant, or is it still of capacity and it's a matter of the pump being increased in capacity?
Yeah, I'll let Jason chime in, but at one time, we thought we would need to upgrade the size of the force main, leaving the pump station, because in some of the documentation it showed it as a four-inch. It's actually a six-inch, as we understand it, and the six-inch is large enough to convey the, what we're going to pump through it. There's some other considerations. We're still, as Jason mentioned, evaluating that. We may include the replacement of that six-inch as part of the project.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
So capacity will be achieved to handle the projects that are currently on the docket and then some thereafter, is that correct?
Yep, yep. As I mentioned, allowances have been made for, you know, future development that's not before the board today, should it ever occur. So, yeah, there's capacity to convey what we anticipate based on what we know now, as well as, you know, the future loads.
Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Hearing done, well, thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
It's out of line.
Thank you all for your time. Have a good evening.
A legal notice for the public hearings appeared in the Daily Messenger along with under-review signs being posted on the subject parcels. Postcards were mailed to property owners within a minimum of 500 feet from location for the initial public hearing date of each application. For applications carried over, please refer to the Planning and Building Office. With regard to public hearings, speakers are requested to limit their comments to three minutes and will be asked to conclude comments at five minutes. That means you can sneak in five minutes, but we're going to cut you off. The first item on the agenda is Bristol Garden Growing Greenhouses. The public hearing is still open on this one. This is 37 SP 2021, 7432 State Route 96. It's zone commercial slash light industrial. The owner is SAS RMS LLC, tax map number 15.00-2-20.120. Applicant is requesting approval to construct four Westbrook greenhouses, which are 24 feet by 140 feet and 14 feet high, and five Westbrook greenhouses, 24 feet by 120 feet long and 14 feet high for growing flower and vegetable plants. Anybody here for this?
Good evening, thank you. Fred Shelley from BME Associates representing the applicant. Mr. Tom Sanna, the applicant for this project is also in the audience today and will be available to answer any questions that I may not be able to. Thank you for the introduction of the project. The plans have not been revised since the board has last seen them. We had submitted responses to the initial comments to the Town Engineer. We received a letter from the Town Engineer stating that they have accepted the responses and the revised plans, and then there was just one additional comment about coordination of building permit materials. The last time we were here at the, last time we presented the project to the planning board, there was a comment in regard to shared parking or a parking agreement with the Thirsty Turtle owner. We have received correspondence from Mr. Ted Run, Jr., provided that to the Planning Board Secretary. I'm not sure if the board received any of those emails or not, but I do have copies if you wish to see them.
You remember?
Sure.
I don't think we got them. Thank you. Can't reach that far. My bad shoulder. Pardon me?
So in summary of the email from Mr. Run, is the agreement that, and I apologize, that wasn't part of the agreement or the initial thing with Thirsty Turtle. However, there was a discussion about temporary parking of approximately 14 cars on the Bristol's property, and that was on an if-needed or as-needed basis, which is stated in this email. Also, the owner had indicated that it's been about a year since they had done their patio expansion, and they have not experienced a need or an overflow of parking at that site. They also indicated that they currently have about 111 existing parking spaces. Review of the previous planning board minutes for that application of the Thirsty Turtle, it appeared that it was stated that there were 108 spaces before the patio was installed. So in essence, there's three additional parking spaces than the Thirsty Turtle had at that point. The owner further goes on and says that there's a potential area behind the restaurant to provide an additional 10 parking spaces, so a total of 121 parking spaces could be accommodated on the site where 108 were existing at the time of that application. And then I'll just read through Mr. Benedict's quick comments.
Is that directly behind the Thirsty Turtle?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if you have an aerial of that, but just in review of aerial photos from Google, it appeared that there were some storage containers directly behind it. It looked like there were a few areas indicated or spaces indicated there.
We do have, but it's not very good.
I was looking at Google Earth. It does show those storage containers taking up half the depth of all of those spaces behind the building. I don't know what the storage containers are for, but if it's temporary, that's one thing, but if they're going to be there permanently, they don't have those spaces to park. So, a little surprised to see the response regarding as necessary situation. I don't think that was...
Is that how we left it? I don't remember.
I don't remember that at all.
I don't remember that.
I remember it as, this is what they're going to do to make more room for the clientele.
Yeah, that's how I remember it, too.
It seems a little disingenuous to make that statement on their part, honestly. I don't know if Al has weighed in on the amount of parking that is required for that facility?
Eight, fifteen, four, thirteen.
Okay, is that one of those information dumps he sent, or is this different?
Fred, is there an easement proposed over the parking stalls that are shown on your drawing?
There is no easement proposed at the time. As I understand, it was an agreement. I haven't reviewed that actual agreement that they have signed off. And Mr. Logan, I can, I guess I can appreciate it because I wasn't at that meeting, but I did review the planning board minutes from March 9, 2021, and it did, it did discuss potential or limited parking or temporary parking over there on the Bristol's property.
Yeah, my recollection is a little different, but I had to read the minutes over myself to understand where you're coming from in interpretation, but it was my recollection that because they were taking out that strip of parking to expand the seating areas outside, that they would need to take some space over and had an agreement with your client on the Bristol's. And now I don't know what this parking expansion or these move of these spaces is gaining on his property, because it looks like you're just sort of sliding it back and making a wider alley for, or lane to drive between parking spaces, as I look at it in the aerial and understanding it's not your layout, but theirs. Again, my recollection is they needed that space for their employees, or conversely, needed the extra space the employees would be vacating for their clientele. And honestly, for the last year, it hasn't been terribly busy. The pandemic's just opening things up again, so I expect to see cars parked all over the place that, you know, once the place becomes, you know, established again in terms of, you know, it's solid clientele on popular nights, so...
Yeah, I drove by there just a day or two ago, and it was pretty busy.
Yeah.
Picking up.
Oh, I mean, it's good. I'm glad things are opening up for business, but it's not good because I don't think they have enough room to do what they'd like to do, and I guess code enforcement may have to take, you know, keep an eye on it, I suppose.
Well, Al says that you'll need a variance. Have you considered that?
I guess, yeah, just reviewing that quickly, it does appear that a variance may be needed if the parking is extended over the lot line. I may suggest that that might be the responsibility of the Thirsty Turtle to obtain that for their site plan approval, if that, if that indeed was what would happen.
I guess I'm still unsure why they need to slide the spaces over into that area. I don't see that working in the layout that they have. Wes, have you looked at that at all?
So I was just looking in our file on the Thirsty Turtle site plan from March 2021. On March 4, 2021, one of our comments, LaBella, we asked the applicant to clarify the location of the potential overflow parking that was mentioned in the agreement signed between the owner of Bristol's Garden Center and the Thirsty Turtle, signed on February 17, 2021, because we didn't see the overflow parking spaces on the site plan. So the response was that, well, they attached an aerial view of the proposed area where overflow parking would be, and this area would have approximately two dozen spots. And I don't know if, would you mind sharing, switching me on to the, I can show you the photograph that was attached to the email.
And one of the things I recall, Wes, about that conversation was Bristol's was no longer going to be storing landscaping materials in that area, so they would make that space available. Obviously, the aerial is a couple of years older than what, what they were, you know, hoping to portray with a clean sight, but...
Well, that's, so that's an attachment to the email dated March 29, 2021 from Ted Run. So you'll see here, attached is an aerial view of the proposed area where overflow parking would be, and that's what we're looking at here.
So Wes, can you zoom in on the parking area a little bit? Not that, not what they're requesting, but this long strip of parking spots right on the property line.
Yes, all right. That's a little, that's a little too much.
You like that glass.
Yeah. So all the way to the left, that, where are you going to put more parking? You know, where, you, the Thirsty Turtle.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll grab the pointer. So, and again, we're not designing their parking lot, but what we're suggesting is if parking is installed along this line, this row of parking can be shifted over. That would open up this lane here for a drive aisle, and then potentially, this owner could double-bank these parking spaces here.
So Wes, can you bring up Google Earth?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's got a current view of what it looks like there with all the parking spaces laid out.
Yeah, and I believe, yeah, half of that aisle has been removed because of the expansion.
Yeah, so there's, you can make a bigger aisle, but there's not enough room to put a whole nother aisle or another row of parking, as I see it, so maybe for smart cars, but...
Oops. Get my bearings here.
I mean, if you guys are willing to give them that space, then they can make it work, but so honestly, they really should be coming into the board and saying, this is what we're going to do, not just say, well, it was possible overflow parking.
Is that a current photo, or is that a...
That's his current...
It looks pretty new, yeah.
It's...
So if, if this bank here were to remain, this bank may be shifted over so you can park two rows of cars along here, swap this into a drive aisle, and then parking along the property line with an extension into the Bristol's. Is potential. There was also discussion in the minutes of, of this parking area being able to be expanded and then go underground possibly with this. Again, we're not designing their site plan at all, but, and would, would offer that if they do end up having issues there, you know, currently, they say they're in good shape, but if they need, need to expand, then we would suggest that they, you know, approach the applicant with a, with a layout of where they might be able to do that, and then they can carry on from there, or find additional spaces on the, on the site.
I guess I'm wondering with your application, you know, I mean, you're obviously here for Bristol's, and, and you're getting kind of dragged into Thirsty Turtle, and I think our memories are pretty good from what happened because it wasn't that long ago. And I think the parking that you show along the side, I think, I think you're trying to serve many masters here. I think you're trying to make everybody happy, and I try to do that in my work, too, and sometimes it's tough to accomplish. I think the proposed parking along the side there is problematic. I think it really works against the intent of what a setback is. You know, when you take a look at the reason we put setbacks in our zoning requirements, the purpose is to have a decent separation between structures, and that kind of violates that. You also mentioned you don't have a, you don't have an easement for it yet. It hasn't been agreed to, maybe subject to a variance, and then I also noticed that you've got a drainer swale going through it, at least on the plans that I was provided recently. So I'm wondering if, I guess if I'm in your shoes, I'm wondering if that's your problem in terms of this application, and if it doesn't really need to just go back to the Thirsty Turtle and have them take care of what they should have taken care of before.
I would agree with that, all of that, except for the fact that they apparently agreed to allow for some temporary parking in, during the last application by Run to do the expansion. So they sort of took on a liability, if you will, I'm not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And in terms of the approval of that expansion. So if they're saying that what they have now is working, but all of a sudden, it's not because business gets much better, they have to come back before the board and ask for a, an agreement, an easement, you know...
Or a limited seating.
Or limited seating, or something to that effect, or do what they suggested, maybe with the retention pond, if that's what it is. And I remember that was an issue when they first, you know, expanded that lower parking lot in the front.
Right, well, I mean, if I take a look at that...
Right, well, I mean, if I take a look at that site right now, I'm, I'm struggling to see how they're achieving the coverage requirements. I mean, it looks to me like they've paved just about everything.
I was going to say, green space is a little premium there.
The pond is, is actually giving them some green space, so, and I suppose it's actually functioning in a, in a decent capacity as well, in terms of stormwater treatment. I don't, I don't know that they've got much more to go, and, and I don't want to derate their success, because I think they've done a lot with it, building in that business. And they're involved in the community, too. But I just, and I don't see how we could or should hang up Bristol's because of.
Not intending to do that?
Yeah.
I, what I can't see is approving the plan that they're suggesting with a gravel parking area expanded onto their property without any of that, the variance and the, you know, easements and all that kind of stuff. So I would say at least we need a note saying that there is nothing been approved yet for expansion onto this property. You could show that as potential or, you know, possible future, you know, for, you know, waiting for approval. I know, Wes, you probably got some language for something like that, or you could just remove it altogether.
Sure.
In the final, you know, approved plan.
So removing would be great, and I'm sure Mr. Senna would be happy with that, but however, the note that we do have on here is proposed parking reservation for 14 spaces to be installed by others, parking installation to be coordinated with the owner of the site. So that's, that's how that's indicated at, at this moment now. So we have not proposed any grading, we've just provided an area for that, and whoever installs it, whoever needs it, is going to have to design that and, and get that approved.
And part of that approval I could see is requiring asphalt paving, and of course, the agreement and easement and whatever variance you need for offsets to payment. I mean, it's not as big of a deal if there's no second building right next to the other, because a fire truck can get at things across parking space, but other than that.
So should we have them remove it from the drawing and just leave a note, or box out an area, or?
I would think we just, we should have a note, an ongoing note saying, this is not an approval of parking for the adjacent property, and, and that would have to come before, you know, it's nice that they're putting it on there as a potential, but it needs to get approved. Ernie, you're a lawyer, she probably could think of the language, too, but.
I'm not going to be presenting there.
Right.
If I may suggest, I, we can revise this to say potential parking reservation, and then we'll, we can add notation that the owner would need to obtain site plan approval through the town.
That would make me feel better or more comfortable with.
Yeah, and, and I think they'd have to have a reciprocal easement or something.
Sure.
Need to be formalized.
All of that legally is, is not part of your present, your application, and as long as they don't look at it as planning board approval of what they would want to do without coming back to the board and saying, here's what we want to do, and here's how we're going to do it with Bristol's, they can't do it, so.
So do we communicate that to them somehow?
For the Thirsty Turtle?
Yeah.
I think that the, the Bristol's probably would.
I think the applicant can do that.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure the applicant would be happy to convey that, and then I might suggest that if there is a parking issue, then code, code enforcement would probably be notified and would thereby notify them that.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to limit their business.
Something's going to trigger it, you know, whether it's increased seating or not increase, increased attendance or increased vehicles, so.
But, but I think what Wes called up was exactly what I remembered, and that red, red square, at the time that application came up, when I looked at it, I thought, well, that seems ample.
Yeah.
Or what they're needing at this point, and now I see what you're proposing, which is.
Buildings.
Buildings where the parking was shown, so therein lies the discussion, I guess.
Yeah.
A little fuzzy.
I guess that's my, my main issue, everything else looks fine from my perspective.
Thank you.
So.
I'm good as well. Well, you've heard. You have the next step.
Pardon me?
Next step is yours.
Okay. Or revisions of the plans, or?
And getting something straightened out with the Thirsty Turtle.
Is, is the Thirsty Turtle item something that can be taken care of after even approval of, of this site plan? I think, I think we're satisfied, to me, what it sounds like the discussion, it sounds like the planning board is satisfied with what you've described tonight, or the site plan, revising your note, revising your notation, and the, the parking issue is something that's going to be taken care of, or that's got to be addressed not by you, because it's not your, it's not your site plan.
Of course.
It's the neighbor's site plan. So I think that can be taken care of aside from acting on this application.
That's what was, that's my conclusion from this conversation, so.
But, you know.
I think we can move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, were we ready to do that with the draft resolution that we have in front of us? Anything else we had to do on this one, Ernie? Sorry?
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move, I'll second.
Move, no seconds, any opposition? Hearing none, fruit.
Aye.
We have to make any amendments to this at all? We have a resolution, which I'll read. It's for the Bristol Garden Growing Greenhouses, 7432 State Route 96, today's date, March 22, 2022, application number 37 SP 2021. We're asked the planning board with the following findings of fact, there are 13 of them, I will read a couple of them because they're an issue. And number nine is the Town of Victor Code Enforcement Officer reviewed the site plan in a letter dated October 26, 2021, and March 3, 2022, and no further comments except A letter submitted March 22, 2022, from Al Benedict, with regard to the parking, which has to be addressed at a later date. I guess that's it. Let's resolve that the planning board here by waives section 2.7.11 of the town's Design and Construction Standards that would require three-foot freeboard requirement, requires that the one-foot freeboard be provided, and be it further resolved, whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the elements at action on March 22, 2022, and have identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Bristol Garden Growing Greenhouses will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved, the application of Thomas Senna Site Plan entitled Bristol Garden Growing Greenhouses, drawn by BME Associates, dated August 9, 2021, received by the planning board as of September 21, 2021, last revised March 1, 2022, Planning Board Application Number 37 SP 2021, be approved with the following conditions, and if you have any other conditions you want to add in there, let me know.
Ernie, I was just going to say that Lobella reviewed plans for, you know, prior to signing it, for the, I guess the notes that we just discussed on the parking, or temporary or potential parking, whatever.
Could that be an ongoing condition?
That would be prior to him signing it, making sure that the, that the corrections or updates to the notes regarding the potential future parking are placed on the drawings.
Do you want it on the, prior to the signature?
Yes.
All right. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan, number one, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that the comments in a letter dated March 17, 2022, from Lobella Associates be addressed. Three, that comments from Stormwater Manager dated November 1, 2021 be addressed. And what language you on here?
That Lobella review the drawings as revised during this meeting's discussion regarding the potential for future parking on the east side of the property, or Thirsty Turtle parking, can make it simple, yeah.
You got that?
Yep.
Oh, good.
Got it. To make it sound better than I just said it.
Any others? Ongoing conditions, number one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including section four. Two, at a referral of the building permit application to the town engineer, if a retaining wall is included in the construction plans. Three, that a building permit be obtained before the start of construction, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter.
I'll move as amended.
Joe moves it.
I'll second.
That's second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Sure, welcome. You don't need this. Next item is the Rotach Pole Barn, this is at 1373 School Road, it's 02 SP 2022, it's Zone Residential 2, the owner is Robert Rotak, tax map number 28.00-2-19.00. Applicant is requesting approval to build a 45 by 40-foot pole barn slash garage. Anybody here for that?
Over here.
Where?
Mr. Rotach.
Tell us a little bit about this barn.
Sorry, I didn't.
Tell us a little bit about this pole barn.
Yeah, it's, it'll be built by Seneca Pole Barns, a local company, and I can tell you that the colors are going to match the house, the light gray and with a blue roof, and there's going to be windows and a one-foot overhang all, all the way around. I can't really tell you much more than that, it's pretty simple. The map shows that there's two doors in it now, garage doors, and I might decrease that to one, other than that, pretty much is. I think you guys all have these plans I had done up.
Yeah.
Right.
We also have a, an email from your next-door neighbor, Steve Sykes. Says, Dear Planning Board, as Bob, the next-door neighbor, I wish to state that I have no objection to his plans to build a 40 by 40 pole barn slash garage, regards, Stephen Sykes, or Stefan.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
Well, your next-door neighbor doesn't have any objection to the pole barn.
Your next-door neighbor's okay with the pole barn.
Oh, okay.
You want to read it?
Yeah, sure, I would.
Okay.
Sure. Actually, right from the beginning, it's always been a 40 by 45, so.
You want, you want this?
Yeah, sure.
You have it?
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, anybody from the board have any questions? Mr. Rotak?
I guess I have a question. Did, did you have to go to the zoning board for any type of a variance to put the barn?
Yeah, I already did that a long time ago.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that variance is.
As far as I know, the next step is the building permit, I think I've gone through everything else.
You got a area variance on August 26, 2021, from the zoning board, to be forward to the front line, primary structure.
Yeah, the issue was, I mean, the house sits 300 feet back in, and it was impossible for me to put the barn back farther than the house because of, you know, the lay of the land, I guess you could say.
And, and the lay of the land is, is good, and you must have convinced the zoning board of that, in order to get that variance, I assume that there's positive drainage and, and the site drains well away from the building that you're proposing, the pole barn? Is that correct?
It's going to, yeah, yeah, well, it is, it's the highest spot on the, you know, the property. It's where I park now, I just don't have a structure there.
I don't have any more questions.
No, it seems like a good place for your barn, because, like you said, you've parked there now, there's some gravel space, so you're not cutting trees down for it, if you are, it's a couple of minor things, but.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with the location, I'm, I was a little worried when I saw this about the 100-year flood plain, so I don't know if anyone has looked at that, or if you've experienced flooding in your backyard from Mud Creek?
Not where I want to build the barn.
Yeah.
I haven't really, it's happened a few times since, I've lived there 35 years, I think, and it's, it's, it's gotten a little wet there about three or four times, maybe, but the previous owners, you know, have done some things around there to, oh, like the house has a small flood berm that kind of encircles the one side, and the intention I have is, I've got to level out a spot to do it, so at one end, it would probably, it's probably going to be raised up three foot.
Drops off.
And, yeah, it's just going to, you know, it's going to be a little bit higher than it is right now, but it shouldn't affect any drainage, I've never seen it, the water there, so.
Okay, well, you said it was in the highest spot in that area, so.
Yeah, that the topographic map shows it, you know.
Okay. Nothing else, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm all set.
Anybody from the public who wants to speak on this application? Hearing nothing, close the public hearing, a motion for that. Al Moose?
I'll second.
No seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. We have a resolution for you, Mr. Rotak. It's for the Rotach Pole Barn, 1373 School Road, dated today's date, 3/22/22, application number 2 SP 2022, whereas the planning board made the following findings of fact, and there are eight, now therefore it be resolved that the application of Robert Rotak Site Plan entitled Rotak Pole Barn, received by the planning board, February 16, 2022, Planning Board Application Number 02 SP 2022, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan, number one, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that any exterior lighting be compliant to code and approved by the code enforcement officer. Ongoing conditions, number one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including section four. Two, that a building permit be obtained before the start of construction, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. And I should read this, this one finding of fact, number seven, applicant received an area variance on August 26, 2021, from the Zoning Board of Appeals due to the accessory structure forward of the front line of the primary structure. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll move.
Joe moves, second, Scott second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Where'd you go? Oh, okay. You got a letter. You can stay in the, the rest of the meeting if you'd like, too.
We're okay to go.
Thanks, Kim.
We're interpreting.
I know, he said that. All right, the next item is Dish Wireless at Baker Road, it's 02 SU 2022, 90 Baker Road, owner is Pinnacle Towers, Zone Residential 2, tax map number 1.02-1-24.000. Applicant is requesting approval to install antennas, ancillary, ancillary power, tower, and ground equipment at an existing wireless facility with no change, oh, it says charge, but I think that means no change to height or ground. but I think that means no change to height or ground space. Oh, there we go.
Snuck up on you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Richard Zajak, representing Crown Castle on behalf of Dish Wireless. Specifically, Dish is proposing to install three antennas at the 120-foot level of the existing 190-foot self-support tower. They're also proposing to install a five-foot by seven-foot ground equipment pad. No tower height increase or ground compound expansion. Uh, the project does classify as an eligible facilities request under Section 64.9 of the rules of the FCC.
What is your name again?
Uh, Richard Zajak.
This came in as a correspondence late, uh, today. I don't know if it made it to you yet. Mm-hmm. Uh-uh. No. Mr. Odell.
See it in here?
Yep.
Do you have any comments regarding that communication from the resident?
Um, just that this has been proven through numerous testing that, that 5G is, is safe, and there are certain rules, regulations that are put in place by the government, by the FCC, excuse me, standards that we are held to, that all the carriers are held to in our, in terms of, you know, signage and, and frequencies and all that sort of thing. So there is no harm to the public with this sort of installation. Uh, that's been proven, um, previously numerous times. Um, I have heard concerns about that in the past. This isn't the first time we've heard a resident voice concerns over that. But that is proven through scientific studies that, that this is safe. This is, um, you know, nothing that's going to affect the general public.
Mr. Odell mentions an RF survey. Was that done?
It, it can be provided, if that's something that the board, you know, would like to see. Um, this is well within the limits of the RF radiation frequencies. Of course, like I said, there are standards that regulate all that sort of thing coming from the FCC, uh, and, and this will be within that. The frequencies are gonna be utilized with this installation. And if that's something that's gonna, you know, put minds at ease, then I can certainly provide that.
Well, we've had other, uh, applications where this issue has come up.
Okay.
But apparently is a hot-button issue for residents. Is Mr. Odell here? Do we have your, your email? And you, we see your concerns. You say you, you live 500 feet from the location.
Actually, closer. It stares me right in the eye.
Could you come up to the microphone?
Actually, I live closer to that. I'm right across the street from it, and I am measuring radiation on my own. I am a radio technician. I have a, a first-class license from the FCC, as a broadcast technician. I've been in this field for more than 30 years. Uh, I have all the equipment and training to measure it, and I've measured levels coming off those towers that are way above OSHA standard. Maybe not in the range where, where the cell phone towers are operating, but they continuously change. Um, anything that emits radiation needs to have a survey done as to where the people are and how much radiation is getting to them, because I can walk out my front door and get more than 12 times the radiation that I should be getting in some frequencies there. And that's very annoying to me, since I've had cancer twice and survived it and don't want to do it again. And this is becoming an antenna farm, and I don't want it to, my, my home to become part of this, uh, place to throw antennas. They can put that somewhere else. They don't have to be putting bunches of them up so close to where people are living. There's also six or seven other families that are within this range, that are slightly down the hill on Baker Road, that are also exposed to it, probably don't know enough to complain about it. Um, the FCC is being notified about the radiation levels from this area. This is a very, um, serious concern. Um, the FCC has recently clamped down on everybody that has a transmitter and made them prove that their levels were low enough to be safe, because OSHA does have a standard for that, and it should be measured, and it should be produced as proof that it does comply, because just saying it does, doesn't mean a thing to me. It has to be measured in somebody that knows how to do it and, um, and has the equipment and the training. Um, these levels are cumulative. They cause damage, and over a certain amount, you can't turn it around and retract it. So it's a concern to me. Someone needs to be watching for this. The FCC has allowed a lot of installations that slip through the cracks. Um, those same two towers, one of them is 250,000-watt broadcast stations running, and a lot of the radiation problem is coming right from them, because it's a total of 100,000 watts being broadcast in the 100 megahertz region, which is the most dangerous. And I'm measuring high levels from that, and who knows what I'm getting from these, uh, 5G stations now. They're all over the place. Each carrier has a different set of channels they use, so it's hard. Some of the channels, like Verizon's, are up in the, uh, 24 gigahertz range. It's very high.
So what he is proposing is additive to the situation, as you see it?
I would like to have a moratorium on it until proof is actually given out of the radiation levels that are actually hitting me. And I'd like to see how it is in the other people, which are pretty close to this, too.
Not within our purview to issue a moratorium. That would be the town board or even the, the county board. This is in the federal, uh, we're under federal regulations here, so we don't have a lot of leeway, anyway.
Right, but you're asking to, to have comments on approval, and I'm, I'm a negative comment for that. I don't need to have more and more and more cell phone carriers decide to go up there. I'd rather it stop right now. And they're not the only tower that's there. There's other ones. The SBA is also right across the street from me, and, um, I notice the interference from these stations is mounting. The more they put up there, the harder it is to receive anything up there. There's a lot of RF congestion in that, in that area, just going up that road. All your stereos in your cars blank out for, for probably a mile and a half from that hill. And who are they kidding? So, you know, that's, it's just as bad as Pinnacle Hill. You drive anywhere near that hill, you lose all reception. It just knocks everything off the air. It's a lot of power to have that so close to you.
What is the distance?
The distance? It's approximately 275 feet from me. Um, it's a lot farther away than the distance from where you travel on Pinnacle Hill. Um, they have all kinds of high power going on up there on that hill, but it's separated by height, which is a prime consideration when you put up a transmitter. Um, antennas can beam it downward, but the higher you are, the less radiation there is at the people that are close to it. So there's a lot of solutions to that problem. They don't have to just put it up. These things that they're putting up for the cell phone tower are very directional, and they mostly beam down where I am. They don't go straight across, because the customers aren't up high in the air. They're down low on the ground, and so that means that I get hit with the radiation from it.
Is there Jackie, uh, Dalton here tonight? We also have a, a email from her. I assume that's a her. She's the one that appeared on the other one, isn't she?
Yes.
Well, the most I'd like to see is that the measure tabled until adequate proof is given that they do meet the requirement of OSHA standard.
Well, as I say, we, we, we're under a real constraint when it comes to federal rules and regulations, but I think asking for the, the data that you've just mentioned would be helpful for everybody.
The applicant indicated they were willing to do it.
Yeah, he did.
Right. There is a spec, and you guys probably should be understanding that for your own safety. And, um, you know, I had to go through it. Um, the FCC is cracking down on everybody. In fact, they went after all the amateur radio operators and made them prove how much was coming off their stations, um, to protect the surrounding areas.
What do you have to establish that they did that? Who? The FCC.
The FCC is demanding that.
Yeah, what do you have to, to confirm that?
Uh, just the letter that I sent into them. Um, I've had communications with them in the last year and a half about the amount of levels of radiation coming off of that area, and, um, they told me that they're gonna investigate it. So I would imagine I'm gonna be hearing from them pretty soon.
Did you get anything in writing from them?
No.
You expect?
No, I got a phone call from them, but that's about it.
Expect?
FCC is in a bad position. They've had budget cuts, and they've eliminated almost half of their staff. So there aren't people that go out and actually look at things anymore. Their field offices are all closed. They investigate complaints, but only if they're bona fide complaints, that somebody that knows what they're talking about makes a, you know, a formal complaint to them. Then they'll investigate it. Uh, as far as all other services like, like amateur, they've left that up to the A double R L, which is a private organization to do all their enforcement. They don't even care anymore.
Is there anybody else here to address this application? Uh, hearing none, and if the board has anything, we'll go to the board, but I suspect we're gonna have to table this. Can you get it as quickly as the next meeting?
Yeah, if I, can I reply to some of those comments?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Here, go ahead. Just, just address a couple of things real quick. That's no problem. We can supply a, a certified report showing RF frequencies. That's more than happy to do that. Obviously, some of the limitations, we only have one tower up there. There are multiple towers in this local area, so I can only speak to the Crown Castle entity that we're proposing here. As you kind of referred to, excuse me, this is an eligible facilities request, which there is federal law. If you check certain boxes, meaning you're not extending the height of the tower, you're not extending the ground compound by more than 30 feet. Um, if you fit into the certain category, then it is deemed approved, is the certain language in the FCC, meaning that a certain town or jurisdiction can request additional information to prove that it fits within that box, but there is nothing that the town can do, per se, to deny that request. More than happy to supply the RF report, um, to put minds at ease.
You can do that to probably help us.
Yes, that's no problem. I can certainly do that.
And we have another member who's not here tonight, who's, I think, quite knowledgeable in this, in this area, that could weigh in on the...
Sure. It's not a problem.
Which I assume he'll be attending.
Yeah.
He might be on YouTube right now.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Joe, if you're on...
Are you on YouTube?
Calling Joe Limbaco. If you want to make a comment, now's a good time.
Well, let's wait till next time.
Yeah. And he's got another application, you have, for Brownsville Road, same representative, correct? So I guess my only question to the request, or that you're agreeing to test, is you're testing for just your equipment, or are you gonna measure what's out there coming from the tower?
This is measuring everything and showing how this installation will affect it.
Okay, that's great.
To, to show that this proposed dish wireless antennas that they're looking to put up there, um, will not render it, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Non-compliant. It'll show that everything is still compliant, um, well within RF limitations.
Okay.
So this is something, I take it, that you do on a regular basis? This is not surprising to have this discussion with board members?
No. Um, regular basis is, occasionally, there, the questions come up regarding radiation frequencies. Uh, we've heard that in the past. As I said initially, there are line, certain regulations that we have to take into consideration with everything. Um, you know, there's, there's federal guidelines that mandate what, you know, things have to be in a certain, um, within certain limits. That is all part of the discussion when we go out and, um, you know, plan these installations, working with our customer, who in this case is Dish Wireless. Um, as you saw, well, we're gonna get into Brownsville, the next one. Um, the initial plan was to install at 138 feet. Uh, we realized there was gonna be interference there with some of the other carries on the existing tower, so we have engineers, we have RF folks, we have tower structural analysts that look at all that sort of information, realize that wasn't gonna work, we had to revise it, come down to 120 feet. So we're constantly looking to make sure that everything is within, um, you know, compliant standards from a structural standpoint, from a RF standpoint, from a physical, are there other antennas that are in the way, within, you know, feet of where we want to go? Because our customer might say, we want to be at a certain height, and we say, well, we can't do that because of X, Y, and Z. So all those discussions are ongoing. It's a long-winded answer to say that everything is looked at ahead of time, planned out, and according with the, the laws that are in place from the FCC and others, um, to take everything into account. Um, and really to fit within that bucket of an eligible facilities request. Um, that's obviously we want to, it's advantageous for the customer, it's advantageous for us as a tower owner to stay within those guidelines, because obviously we're afforded certain rights if we do X, Y, and Z things as it's outlined, um, in that checklist. So.
Anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak on this application? Okay, well, it will be on in two weeks, three weeks.
All right, one more comment, sorry. Just, so when you go out and measure the site, you're gonna measure everything that comes off of that tower in terms of RF frequencies, the different frequencies that are being used, correct?
Correct, yeah.
The gentleman said it's two 50,000-watt towers, or, you know, transmitters out there. What if you find that before you even put something up, it goes beyond what should be happening?
I'm sure that's already, that's been calculated, right? I don't have that data in front of me tonight. Um, that's not part of one of the requirements, but that's something I could certainly get and provide.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if you find out that there's too much coming off of that tower, RF, at the property lines, or wherever you measure it, what do you do?
We change, there's, I mean, there's...
And you can't put another thing on the tower, right?
Well, there's, there's different heights you could potentially go at. I've seen it in instances in the past where we've wanted to install at 130 feet. It's come back failing. Um, so, okay, we've got to move up. We get a recommendation from the person who does the study, says, I think, you'd be compliant if, if you do ABC. Move higher is one of those things that I've seen in the past. Um, so there's a number of variables at play that we can adjust with to make sure we stay within that limit.
Well, maybe I'm not being clear. If you go out and don't put anything on the tower, and you just go out and measure what's there now, and for some reason it's higher than what's normally, what's allowable by the FCC, what do you do? I mean, you can't just put your antenna out there.
Are you asking if we're going out to build a new tower?
Well, no, I'm just saying that would throw, that would throw this application into question if it shows that there's already too much equipment out there, as maybe is being intimated by the residents nearby.
Sure, I, yeah, I, and...
Right?
That's all been measured, that's all been factored into whether or not we can, you know...
Well, you've already measured it. You have the data already?
Yes, every, yes. And I can certainly, I can certainly provide a report from an engineer that's stamped and showing that, you know.
So what you've done before, when you scope out the site, is you find out what's out there, and you say, yep, I can still put something on it, and it will be legal, you know, in accordance with.
Yes.
So you have good confidence that what's out there now is not too much...
Correct.
...for you to make this application in the first place?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. What I needed to...
Gotcha, okay.
Relative to the comments from the resident, uh, what, what do you have to say concerning his, um, comments and what he experiences? Is that consistent with your knowledge at this point of this, of what's going on there? It sounds like, it sounds like, um, you're confident that you can produce this report with the information and that, um, that it will be safe. He, he's telling you right now that it's not safe. Um, do you have any comment regarding that?
Well, I guess the only thing I can say to that is, I can provide data relevant to the Crown Castle facility at this location. If there are other facilities nearby, um, you know, we can address that later, but the, or, not later, I shouldn't say, it's portraying words. The Crown Castle facility is emitting radio frequency waves that are within the FCC's allowable standards. I can put a report together for that. I can go back and ask that question to our RF folks, our engineers. I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to speculate and say, I've never seen a situation where there've been concerns about a tower nearby ours that is, you know, affecting ours. So that's a little, another layer on top of this that I can investigate, and we'll get that included in the report, should it be there. I've seen, I guess my answer is, I've seen reports in the past where the Crown Castle Tower, the existing cell tower, very rarely do we see two towers that are in close proximity to each other, um, in a situation potentially such as this. So we measure the RF frequencies off that tower. Here's the number that it spits out when you run a report. Um, so adding the factor of another tower that's, how far away would the other towers on your property, uh, would they, would you say they'd be 100 feet, 200 feet?
Close to about 205 feet.
200 feet. That's right, that's closer.
They're only about roughly 100 feet apart themselves, the two towers.
Right.
It just seems like the, the crux of this conversation is what's the cumulative effect?
Right, right.
And I think that's what the board would like to understand.
Gotcha, and I guess I'm not going to be able to answer that question because I'm not an RF engineer and I'm not going to pretend to.
Problem is RF radiation.
Well, you have to come up to the microphone if you're going to speak.
RF radiation is cumulative. It's not just one frequency like he's talking about for his equipment. It's the combination of everything all going at the same time. And when you have a couple of high-power players in the area, they affect the whole thing. It means that the level, overall level of radiation goes up and it's elevated by all the players. So he can tell you what his equipment is putting out and how much the field strength is anywhere around. They've probably tested for that. It probably isn't harmful in itself. Problem is when you add the whole big picture, it's pretty bad. And no one's addressing it, is what I'm getting at. And it's, it's been forced into an objection by the FCC. They're going after it, one way or another.
He's going to provide whatever information he's got.
But they don't normally check.
Well, he may want to bring an engineer with him next time.
Thank you.
Up to you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, let me, let me consult with our engineer RF folks, and I'll relay the comments, and we'll provide the report, and then we can go from there, I think, is, sounds fair.
Thank you. We'll leave the public hearing open. And word on yours again, this is Brownsville Road this time. 914 Brownsville Road, O3 SU 2022, Zone Residential 2. 914 Brownsville Road, owner is Crown Castle, tax map number 16.00-1-42.20211/CRWN. Applicant is requesting to approve, approval to install antennas, ancillary tower, and ground equipment at an existing wireless facility with no change to height or ground space.
Also about that one?
Same scope of work essentially. The only difference is installing at the 100-foot level of the existing 140-foot monopole, five-by-seven ground equipment pad, no tower height increase, no ground compound expansion. It does classify as an eligible facilities request.
Hey, anybody from the board have any questions?
I'll ask another question. How does it differ from the prior application? I mean, I think I know the answer to this, but I'd like you to just differentiate the two from each other.
There's really not a whole lot of difference. This is part of big picture, part of a nationwide build-out for dish wireless. They're putting this very similar installation, three antennas, five-by-seven ground equipment pad on a number of towers across the country. It's part of a nationwide build-out that was included with the T-Mobile Sprint merger last year. So there are certain deadlines that dish wireless is looking to meet in order to have a functioning network that has been regulated by the Department of Justice as part of the agreement last year. So this, along with the previous one, and a number of other sites across the country are part of that big picture build-out, if you will.
And you don't have a situation such as was described at the prior one in terms of an adjoining tower with the conditions that the resident mentioned? This, this one's relatively.
It was just, just up there.
Or independent? You don't have a, an adjoining tower?
Was it, can you put that one, it shows the tower?
Correct, yeah, I think this one's just kind of out there. There's not much going on around it.
And then, and the nearest resident is how far away approximately?
That information I don't have. I don't want to throw a number out and.
It's up the hill. We saw this tower last year maybe, or the year before. And it's, it's up the hill from Brownsville Road. Behind the golf.
Okay, yeah. So you're, you're, you're in a fairly, you're, you're not in the same neighborhood as, as described in the prior application, so to speak, in terms of density?
50 feet in elevation difference from the house down by, anyway, so that's a guess, but back towards the woods, I think, right? Yeah, here on the edge of the woods. Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say it's hundreds of feet.
It was Dave Condon telling us that it's at least 400 feet. He's not here at the microphone, so.
Good job, Ernie. I did have a question on your last application in terms of which tower we're talking about, because there's like six or seven towers up there. There's, there's two radio stations, which I think is what he was talking about, the 50,000 watt stations, VOR and BER.
Got the drawings here. It's a self-support tower. Again, I don't, I'm not going to pretend to have a whole lot, a ton of knowledge about the other towers that are there. But it is on the drawings, there's a site photo that clearly shows on that one.
I see a site photo, I'm looking at.
Let me see if this.
Towers in this one, but there's like three on one site, two on another, and then there's two, two big antennas for the radio. All right, I'll figure it out, I guess. I don't want to hold up the meeting. Have it immediately available, so. It's, I was worried about which, if the two 50,000 watt towers were not one of the towers that you were going to be putting equipment on, you're on some of the other one, one of the other ones, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I'm not quite sure what your question is.
All right. Is it, are you putting equipment on the, one of the two towers that has 50,000 watt transmitters on it?
I believe those are, those are the radio station towers that are right there.
Just wanted to bear in mind that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that's all I got, thanks.
Okay.
Anyone from the, the public wish to speak on this application? Hearing nothing, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
That moves it.
Second.
Al seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. We do have a resolution on this one. This is for the resolution for dish wireless at Brownsville Road, 914 Brownsville Road, today's date 3/22/22. Application number 3 SU, 03 SU 2022, where as the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are ten, now therefore be it resolved at the application of Crown Castle USA, agent of Dish Wireless LLC, site plan entitled Dish Wireless at Brownsville Road, drawn by Hudson Design Group LLC, received by the Planning Board February 18, 2022, Planning Board Special Use Application Number 03 SU 2022, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan, warn that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that the comments in a letter dated March 8, 2022, from code enforcement, from the code enforcement officer be addressed. Ongoing conditions, number one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, that a building permit be obtained before construction begins, and it be further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do you motion?
I'll move it.
Is that Joe?
Yes.
Joe moves. Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Four, nothing.
All right, thank you.
And next was the Delta Sonic Car Wash, but that's been removed until the April 12th meeting. We have a preliminary application for Valentine Meadows, and I would note here that the public hearing is closed on this one. It's 1PS 2022, 7241 Valentine Road, Zone Residential 2. Owner, Co-Mark Holdings, tax map number 1.02-1-21.000. Applicant is requesting approval for a clustered subdivision of a 28.6 acre parcel into eight individual lots ranging in size from 1.58 acres to 5.87 acres. The property is currently divided by Valentine Road with an existing house on the south side of Valentine Road, and existing barn structure on the north side of Valentine Road. This will be the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The sketch plan was acknowledged complete January 11, 2022. Wes, are you going to take us through part two?
Well, I think just to bring the board up to speed on where we were from last time, a couple of the concerns. One was site distance along Valentine Road, right? We know that the Valentine is a very curvy road, and to try to remedy or minimize the adverse conditions there, the applicant has proposed to do some tree clearing on the south side of Valentine Road, and then also do a bit of grading to help improve site distance. And Lobella feels that those are measures that are making progress towards improving site distance. There is one tree that's in front of the existing house there that might impede site distance. So I think what we would like to see, and, and maybe it's something that we can, you know, verify or, or have the final subdivision address, is probably removal of that tree to help, help with the site distance issue. But the vegetation removal, the tree removal along the roadway there, that's going to, that's going to go a long ways for, for site distance. I think that really remedies our concern, and we can, again, verify that going forward. So the other one is, is the stormwater, our stormwater comments. Our, our person, Mary Steblin, she took a look at the stormwater responses from the applicant, and the applicant is proposing to, to not develop the three lots that are in the rear on the northernmost lots. I think there are lots five, six, and seven. And it's, it's similar to the way we've addressed some other subdivisions in the town. And I think maybe as, more as a comprehensive look at future subdivisions, we need to decide, you know, how these are going to be handled, whether or not we're going to look at, you know, stormwater management in full, even if they're, even if these projects aren't going to propose development now. And I think what would happen in the future is that lots five, six, and seven, if they, if someone wanted to build on those, they would need to come back to the planning board for, for site plan review. So in general, I think we're okay. I know Scott Harder, he provided an email yesterday with some, some concerns, or maybe it wasn't concern, but just.
It was a question.
Observation. Yeah. So, you know, I, it seems like Lobella is okay with where things stand today.
That's, that's fine with me, yeah. I was, I was curious as to, you know, what's the difference between this project and a, and a subdivision with two phases? Because it kind of looks to me like a subdivision with two phases. And I understand, you know, what has been done, and I also understand that with small single-family residential projects, it's really hard to achieve, you know, the stormwater regs and put in permanent stormwater structures because it's just not something that you want to do for a project of that size economically, and it's also. You know, something that's, can become somewhat of a nuisance. It's a homeowners association, a responsibility sometimes. So that was the purpose of my question. But I, I think if we have some sort of basis like you describe, I think that's okay. But yeah, I think it's, it's definitely a thought for this project and, and all the ones that we review here on.
Yeah, so that, and so I did share that email with, with our stormwater person, and yeah, we were talking about that a little bit more, so we can also follow up with Kim as we go forward on some of these projects.
I guess, I guess the question I had regarding the site distances, I mean, how do we, do we have some sort of measurement that's been taken that says if that tree goes out or that clearing is made, that we will achieve the magic number?
Based on the survey that we recorded on the site, obviously, because you can't shoot through the trees now, right?
Right.
To shoot that site distance. So it's, it is a, a design, right? It is a proposed scenario. But the profile and the, the line of sight proves that that will achieve what we're needing, what we need to for the driveway.
And, and Lobella's okay with that? Wes, is that correct?
Yeah, in general. And I'm going to, I'm going to demonstrate just with Google Earth, it's probably not the most scientific method to, to observe the site distance issue, but, and I don't have a regular mouse, so, but I'll try to do it with the mousepad here, if I could, yeah, if you could switch me up here, if I can get this to work. Okay. So this, this is the project parcel, this is the north side of the road, south side of the road. We know one of the entrances, one of the driveway entrances is going to be right about in this location, and I can tell because there's a line here that is the shade of the telephone pole, right? There's a telephone pole right here. So if I'm looking to measure, and I think we're looking at, we're looking at to get 500 feet of, of site distance. So if I, if I put a line here, and then I'm looking for site distance of about 500 feet, that puts us to about right there, right? And so you can kind of see where this, this might be the generalized line of sight, where this line is. And this, this is the area where the applicant is proposing to do the tree clearing and the grading, right? And as you can see, there's an existing tree right in this location that's in front of the existing house that, that would likely impede that visual site distance. So these are kind of the, this is the vegetation that the applicant is proposing to remove kind of along this, this line of sight right here, and that would really improve the condition out there. Not only for the people that are entering and exiting the driveways, but also for the general traveling public, even if they have nothing to do with this, driving into these lots or this subdivision, you know, that's, that's going to improve conditions out there.
So is that something we would put as a, as a condition? That that be implemented then as a final condition when they're, when they're final?
Yeah, there's, there's some of that already proposed on the, on the most recent set of plans, and I think this would also be a condition of preliminary approval. I would definitely recommend that, and, you know, we'll, we would revisit, you know, the final plan design, just to assure that, you know, these conditions are, are met.
In addition, we've proposed on the subdivision platte an easement to the Town of Highway Department for clearing and mowing of vegetation.
So this is kind of a similar, the scale of this is a little bit different, but it's, it's kind of similar to what was done on the Willis Hill Estates project, right? We had a, we had a site, we had some concerns with site distance there, and, and the developer there was able to minimize and avoid those adverse conditions by, you know, removing some vegetation and doing some grading.
Yep, and, and I, and I guess just as a related comment, I mean, you know, we've had discussions on the driveway separation code item that has been, it's in our code, and then there was another overlay to that that was done. I think for the single-family residential projects that we seem to go to the driveway site distances, which I think is correct, and I, I think the driveway separation isn't really, I haven't really been able to see it applied effectively in the single-family residential projects that we've been reviewing since I've been on the boards. I mean, it seems, seems to be more particular to subdivision roads and commercial. So I think that's a, that's a waiver item for this one, too.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess bottom line being, if they can satisfy the site distance through means like this, then I think, I think that's appropriate for this type of project.
Okay. Oh, so, why don't I just continue on here? So at the last meeting, we had distributed part two of the full environmental assessment form, as, even though this was an unlisted action, the town did request a long form, it just provided a lot more information to be able to take a hard look at the, at what's going on out here. So, and I don't think we have to go through these part two questions in great detail. But just for the public's benefit, I'll, I'll at least read the, the top question and then kind of indicate what we're looking at in terms of impact. So, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. The answer is yes there. All of the subsequent questions are indicated to be no or small impact may occur. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Answer is no. Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, example streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. We've indicated no for this question.
Wes, wasn't there a culvert that crossed the road, and there's this creek that wanders through it, sort of on the westerly side of the?
There is. There is a creek there, but there's no impact. And as you can see on the graphic that's on the screen, see if I can get my pointer out.
It's that darker gray shaded area, I guess, right?
Yeah, it's in this area. And that's proposed to be protected, I think, with a conservation easement, and there's the buffer there as well.
All right.
Good question.
I want to make sure that was clear.
Yep. "Impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer." We've indicated yes here, only in the sense that there's going to be private septic systems there. It's just recognizing that. It doesn't mean that there's a significant adverse impact at all. So all of the sub-questions are indicated to be no or small impact may occur. "Impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding." The indication, we've indicated no in this instance. We're not in a floodplain or a floodway. I understand that there might be some times when the land here is wet due to significant rainfall or in the springtime. "Impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source." We've indicated no. Number seven, "Impacts on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna." We've indicated no. Number eight, "Impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources." We've indicated no. Number nine, "Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource." We've indicated no. "Impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource." We've indicated yes. However, the applicant has provided correspondence from the Office of Parks, Rec, and Historic Preservation on this, and so there are no or small impacts in this regard. "Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in the loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan." We've indicated no. "The impact of a critical environmental area. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area as defined by New York State DEC, state-designated CEAs." The answer here is no. "Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems." We've indicated no. "Impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy." We've indicated no. "Impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting." We've indicated yes in this regard. There's going to be some construction noise with, you know, vegetation removal, installation of driveways, construction of homes. That's going to be temporary in nature, and sound levels would get back to the normal ambient conditions after construction is complete. So no or small impacts in that regard. "Impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants." We've indicated no. "Consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use plans." We've indicated no. They are consistent with the town's future land use map and zoning, and zoning map. "Consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with existing community character." The answer there is no. And that brings us to the end of part two. And then part three, for your consideration, these are draft documents, and we've drafted a negative declaration as part of this part three for you to consider. And I think maybe with that, there might be a resolution that you have, or if the applicant has any questions, or if you have any questions.
I agree with your assessment.
Okay.
The only question I had, Wes, was when you went through agricultural resources impacts. It is a cultivated field that they're developing, correct? I look at the Google Earth aerial, it looks to me like land has been recently farmed. I could be wrong, but.
It doesn't fall within the County Ag District. It's not an established district for agriculture.
That's all I needed to hear, but I just want to make sure.
Do you know the last time that it was farmed?
It's, from my understanding, it's mostly been haylot, but there's no farming currently.
It looks like a haylot, just the way that the rows are of, you know, the lanes that hated.
Cultivated means tilled or not, I don't know. I'm sure if that's what the definition of cultivated.
We didn't have it identified on the town map as an active agricultural.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to ask that, because it looks like it could have been
That's a fair question.
Considered as agricultural, right?
That's a fair question.
I mean, you could have said yes and no or small impact, because it's not on the list, but
Yeah.
That's the only nuance I guess I would offer, but
Okay.
I guess it's the same conclusion at the end, so I'm fine with leaving it. Okay.
Here we have a resolution for you for Valantown Meadows, 7241 Valantown Road. Day's date, 3/22/22. Application number 01PS2022. Whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are fifteen of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on March 22/22/2022, and identified no significant adverse environmental impacts. Now therefore, be it resolved that the project, Valantown Meadows preliminary subdivision, will not have a significant impact on the environment, and hereby issues a negative declaration. By the way, I know this is a safety thing, but anyway, shut off those beeps when the construction vehicles go backwards.
Oh, I thought you were talking about my phone.
That's a law.
I think that's a law. These people are going to run over.
Just asking.
Thank you.
You're a lawyer.
I know. I live within earshot of that. Further resolved that the planning board hereby issues a waiver to section 2.9.1.5 of the town's Design and Construction Standards to allow a total of four lots to be served by a common driveway, where the standards would otherwise require no more than three lots to be served by a common driveway. Now therefore, be it resolved that the preliminary subdivision application of Comarke Holdings LLC, major subdivision entitled Valantown Meadows, drawn by Marks Engineering Sheets 1 through 7, dated January 18, 2022, received by the planning board, January 18, 2022, last revised March 8, 2022. Planning board application number 01PS2022 be approved with the following conditions: Conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the preliminary subdivision plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that section four standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor, of the Design and Construction Standards be met. Three, that the comments in a correspondence dated February 8, 2022, and March 7, 2022, from LaBella Associates be addressed. Four, that the comments in a letter dated March 5, 2022, from Parks and Recreation be addressed. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. One, that the major subdivision comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for land development, including section four. Two, that all conservation easement markers be shown on final subdivision plans. Three, that a reciprocal easement and a common maintenance agreement be submitted in accordance with section 184-8, comma, 211-12, and 211-36 to the town code. Four, that all water services will need to be directionally drilled. There should be no open cut on Valantown Road. Valantown Road is?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, right.
It's not Baker's.
Yeah, all right. Twenty minutes to nine. Then, the third five, that a Town of Victor Highway Work Permit be obtained for work occurring in the town's right-of-way. Six, site plan approval will be required by the planning board prior to lots five, six, and seven becoming buildable lots and before issuance of a building permit. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. You have a motion?
One of the conditions that I might suggest adding, if it helps the planning board, is that it would be in conditions that is ongoing, that must be adhered to, that the applicant address any further site distance concerns of the town engineer, and that final subdivision plans not be signed until the town engineer affirms site distance concerns have been addressed.
Okay, we'll add that.
Works.
Yep.
And now, we're going to hit a motion?
Hasn't.
I'll move.
I'll move. I'll second it.
No seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a solution. Construction vehicles can't go in reverse.
Let's go forward.
Yes.
Next is a sketch application for Stone Brook subdivision, 4803 East Victor Road. Owner is Bruce Desimone, or DeSimone. Tax map number 28.04-2-62.000, 01SK2021, 2022. Zone Residential 2. Applicant is requesting acknowledgement of a complete application for a clustered subdivision of 85 buildable lots on 100 acres in the Town of Victor, with 15-plus acres in the Town of Farmington, for a total of 115 acres. This is the first step of a major subdivision, and only acknowledgement of a completed application will be considered at this meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Lucas, from Marathon Engineering here. I've got Tim and Jeff Smith here as well, from Woodstone Custom Homes. As you mentioned, we're here for Stone Brook subdivision, which we were here to talk about last year when we were going through the process of modifying the overlay district. We have since completed that process with the town board, and so now we are all yours, so to speak. We brought it to a sketch-level design. And so, yeah, we're seeking the completeness of the application so that we can continue with the preliminary design, but we're also just looking for your feedback and your thoughts about the development as we move into the next stage. So I'll give just a quick reminder of what the project is and some of the things that have changed since we've last been here. The property is on East Victor Road, just south of Boca Park Estates, and just north of Auburn Trail. And it is, it does not look like that when you look at it in real life. It doesn't flash. But there's a, it's 115 acres, split between Victor and Farmington. So there's 15 acres in Farmington, 100 acres in Victor. So within that 100 acres, there's a portion of that that's farmland, and there's a portion of it that is sort of a naturally wooded area that follows Mud Creek. So what we've done is we've taken our development, and we've located it in that agricultural area, the area that's currently disturbed and farmed, and we've sort of set aside that natural area along the creek. We walked that with some of the planning board members and some of the town board members last year. So part of the application is a dedication of that open space. That's what we're proposing anyways, dedication of that open space to be owned by the town and forever preserved. There's been, you know, sort of mixed feedback on that. Some town staff has expressed a desire to own that, some has expressed the opposite. So it'll ultimately be up to the town, the planning board, which way that goes, whether it's dedicated or conserved in conservation land. But the 50 acres that we are developing will have 85 lots. So that's another thing that's changed when we were first here. It was 92, and we've since reduced that to 85, where the code allows up to 100 lots on that property. So we're proposing 85. It fits better with the sort of lot sizes that we wanted for this development. So as I mentioned, Boca Park is just north of us. Those lots are around two units per acre. We're at 0.85 units per acre. And then as you get further south, you have the South Gate Hills development that was talked about earlier, and the Bluemont Rise. Those are at half a unit per acre, a third unit per acre. So we fit right in there as you sort of transition and get away from the village or the denser areas. And within the development, there's a range of lot sizes. There's 80-foot lots, up to 105-foot wide lots, as you'd see is in sort of those more rural developments. So now we got the picture back. This is good, because I can point out some other things. There's two entrances, one on East Victor Road, and one on Sunray Crest. So this entrance is important, because it eliminates that temporary turnaround that's in the front yard of that property right now. And it makes, it makes, you know, the town maintenance staff's life easier, as they can plow through there. Emergency vehicles don't have to turn around at the end of that street anymore. So we're improving this condition and preserving a buffer in the back between those two developments. Another concern that came up with the last configuration was the proximity of the lots to East Victor Road. So we've introduced an additional buffer there, sort of pushed those driveways away to be mindful of that. And a sharp eye and maybe a good memory will notice a reconfiguration of these roadways and sort of how they connect. This road A initially was less of a loop and more of a spool that came up to here, to the cul-de-sac, sort of potentially encouraging these residents to take that route, because it was all the same road, you know? Now they got to make two turns in order to make that turn. And I guess what I'm getting is that that modification was a result of some concerns from, you know, the neighboring residents. They don't want to see a large increase of traffic through Sunray Crest, so
They're going to see it.
Well, so they'll see these lots, for sure, right? These lots will most likely take that road. So you can never predict exactly how someone's going to think the shortest route out is. But the best way to determine that, or to predict that, is how many turns they got to make to do that. So now they have to make one, two minimum turns to get out there, as opposed to one maximum to get out at East Victor Road. So we're encouraging with sort of natural measures, or just thoughtful layout, I'll say, these residents to use this entrance and, you know, sort of decentivizing them from using that through way, or that thoroughfare, I guess. Another element that was talked about earlier was the sanitary sewer. So we're also connecting sanitary sewer at the stub at the end of Sunray Crest. That was left there in the same way that the road, the same way that the sidewalk was, sort of almost seemed like it was ready for, or planned for a future extension. So we're going to pick that up, connect to the sidewalk, connect to the roadway system, and also connect to the sanitary sewer. It'll all be routed, as Steve mentioned earlier, to Pump Station 7. And we've shared our flow calculations with LaBella to make sure that those upgrades can accommodate what we anticipate coming from this development. And
Did you hear the presentation earlier?
I did, yeah. Yeah.
Going to assist you?
It was good to hear, yeah. But we have had those early conversations with Wes and Steve from LaBella. Finally, I'll touch on stormwater. We're addressing stormwater on-site through those wet ponds that you'll typically see with these sized developments, improving some conditions along the rear of Field Crest. Currently, there's a ridge, it's not a significant ridge that you would notice, but the drainage is split right around here. You can follow that. You can follow that, that laser line. So there's about ten, fifteen acres of farmland that drains right to the back of these lots along Field Crest Lane. And there's a low point there that's collected with a storm sewer that was installed with the subdivision back in the day. And so we're going to be chopping all that off right here, right at the back of these lots. So we'll, we'll add an inlet at the back of our development in the backyards of those lots so that, that stormwater stops running off into those neighboring lots. And we'll improve, improve that situation. That was another concern that came up, you know, as, in the past, as we've been working through this with the town, so. We've received a few comment letters with minimal comments. I received a comment letter from Wes earlier today and I've had a chance to review that. I think, you know, all things are looking in, in order to me. And I, I'm hopeful that we can, you know, continue this on and develop it to the next level so that we can get into some of those more detailed discussions. But we're interested in your feedback and your comments.
Did you also get the comments from Keith Maynard?
Yes.
Project?
Yes.
And Mark yours, if he didn't have any comment.
Just had to be closer.
No, it's, yeah, the light's on.
He's got to get up close and personal to your mic there, right?
You can do a mic drop with this thing. And Rick McGrane, code enforcement officer, asks if this is going to be done in phases?
Yeah, good, good question. It is, it is going to be done in phases. And what we've sort of narrowed it down to is likely this road here is going to be constructed in the first phase. And then in a future phase, the rest of the development will be constructed. The cul-de-sac, you know, may be constructed in the second phase as well. Likely two, likely two sections, maybe three. But our goal is to create this loop with the first section because we've got to, we've got to grab the sewer, right? And this, this section makes more sense to do first. So that's, it'll be all nailed down in the preliminary submission. But yes, there's an intent to phase it approximately half and half right now.
Al, anything?
And what was the, what's the proposal with the nature? What's the proposal for the nature preserve? Like, would that be dedicated to the town or?
That's what we'd like to see done. There's been a comment from Keith Maynard that the town may not want that. And there's, well, there's actually two things going on, right? Because there's this center open space, which I guess technically isn't what we're calling the nature preserve because that's, that's just sort of extra land that we're putting the, the stormwater pond in. And then there's the remainder of this area. It's, it's, you know, forty-five or so acres all around here. And that's where the real valuable nature is. And so right now we're proposing that both of those areas be dedicated as open space. So it, I guess it's a little unclear whether Keith's concern was related to all of the area proposed or just that specific center area.
To the extent the town did not desire to take dedication, then what would alternate plan be?
The alternate plan would be, I, I guess to the same result. It would be given to the town in conservation. They would have access to it via conservation easement, but it would be private property, you know? So I know that some members of the board expressed interest in, in having that, that valuable land. You know, those, those natural water corridors, I think there's a value in them being publicly owned. Because who knows what you want to do with it in the future? This area down here is beautiful and there's rock outcroppings. As you get up into here, I, you know, we, we envision this area as being hiked by the residents, which would likely not be possible if it was privately owned and under conservation easement. But ultimately, that's up to the town.
Yeah, Jeff Smith, I did want to make clear, I think Keith's.
Jeff, I think you got to be right up to the mic here.
I, I believe Keith's comments had to do with the stormwater management facility, not the nature preserve per se. There are two issues. And we understand that Keith doesn't want to own the stormwater management facility. So whether it be located where it is now or one preliminary plan, if it shifts a little bit, we understand that. The larger issue that Lucas was referring to was that we, we were proposing that the forty-five some acres and the balance of that would be potentially town parkland. And then we would also propose that the fifteen acres in the town of Farmington be joined with their Martenza Park area as well. So they, they were two separate issues. And I think Keith's comment was strictly about the stormwater facility.
Dave is preempting my suggestion that he come up and.
Abe Connaught, Town Board. I think Jeff's a little off on that. I think there'll be very little traction for the town to be interested in that property. Those are the discussions that we're getting into. And I certainly don't want to speak on behalf of Farmington's fifteen acres. But, and I'm speaking just as one board member. But right now I think the traction would be that we're probably not going to be interested in that property.
Steve?
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't trying to say what the town felt. I was just saying that Keith's comment, my understanding, was regarding the stormwater facility. Right, I, I wasn't questioning whether, and we have not been told one way or the other. We spoke to the.
We have a vote in on it.
Right, we, we have brought it up to the town board when we went through the zoning issues. We brought it up to Conservation Board when we did the walks. We've brought it up to the planning board. And when we get a reading from that, then we will carve up the land appropriately. I can tell you now that it, it won't be divvied up eighty-five different ways. We will be putting it into some large parcels if the town doesn't want it. Just because it's much harder to enforce these multitude of conservation areas. And what we've done in our most recent project is we've given substantial acreage to one or two lots. And therefore people understand that they can't go beyond their property boundary. They, they can't mow that area, it's someone else's land. It is very difficult to police conservation easements when they're part of somebody's backyard. So, and when, however that process goes, that's fine. But that wasn't my comment. My comment was, Keith's comment was about stormwater.
Very good, thank you. That's all I have for right now, Ernie.
Anything else?
Just a couple of thoughts. The sidewalk system, it looks like you've got it completely through on one side of the road, through the entire system. I'd like to see on East Victor Road connecting the driveway to the Auburn Trail, making a sidewalk along there. So just as it is for the properties south of the Auburn Trail coming up, and they're going to be connected from those subdivisions, I think that would be important to connect that driveway that you're proposing for this development to the Auburn Trail.
We're talking between, right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Correct.
Yeah, we can explore the feasibility of that in our preliminary design. There's a culvert in, in the way there, but, but yeah, we can look at that.
Okay.
Heard.
I think that would be important because you know people are going to want to go over to the trail. It's a very prominent piece of the town's trail system and connects a lot of things, Canandaigua and Mandan. And, you know, you can go everywhere on that trail. So as our folks from the hiking trails would attest. So I, I would want to make sure we connect that.
Okay.
And I had a question about the turnaround right there. Are you going to get rid of that eventually? So you actually remove the pavement and grass it over and stuff?
I guess that's a question of whether we can do that with the project. We could certainly.
It's not, it's, was it your subdivision?
No.
Last one, okay, so maybe you can't touch it.
Yeah, we'll certainly make it extinct. Yeah, and who, however that gets removed, I guess we can explore that with La Bella. Who would be responsible for that?
Yeah, okay, it's a little more complex than I was thinking, but.
Yeah.
This is not a public hearing.
No. Those are the only thoughts I had.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise I like the changes you made, you know, that, at the connection to the other road, Sunray Crest.
Good, okay. Thank you.
There'll be ample opportunity when we get to that stage. And if you wish, in the meantime, to submit written comments as you did with the cell tower, you can do that too. But tonight we're just see, approving the sketch plan, that's all. We're not approving anything other than it's not buildable, doesn't like. Okay. Hey, Scott?
I assume you got the zoning classification change that you were seeking?
Yeah, correct.
And, and you're coming in a little bit under the C value, I.
Yeah, the C value would allow a hundred lots.
You're doing ninety?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Yeah.
I, I like the layout. I, I think it complements the subdivision to the west. I think it takes care of that dead end street, gives, gives more safety to that subdivision as well. And I think it, it preserves a lot of open space. All I have.
Good.
Thanks.
Anybody else, anything else?
I got a couple of comments for you, Lucas.
Okay.
Pretty easy ones. Well, one of them might be for Jeff. But do you have an anticipated timing? Let's say if it was absent all the planning board review and approval, what might be your timing for getting up and going with the project?
One, we understand that there, the pump station issue is still there and which has changed, I guess, a little bit in the whole bidding process earlier this year. So that we're not in any big hurry. We would proceed with preliminary and then likely towards the end of the year to final. So we would be into construction next year at the earliest.
All right.
So if, if final subdivisions were conditioned on pump station being whatever we rebuilt, that, that would fit with our timing as long as, as I understand that pump stations are planned to be upgraded this year with the next bidding process.
Okay. And then the other thing is that, you know, as you've heard tonight, it's probably not that, it's, well, it's not the town board that's going to be able to decide, or I'm sorry, it's not the town planning board that's going to be able to decide whether or not to accept the land in dedication. So as it might relate to your preliminary subdivision design, it might be wise to approach the town board to discuss with that, have further discussions about that open space and whether or not they want to accept dedication?
I totally agree with that. I mean, we were looking for guidance in terms of procedurally when we should do that. And clearly preliminary would have a lot of detail in it. So it should be kind of in that process. And maybe we can work with Kim to see what we should do and get on the town board. And, and that way we, the preliminary pound can reflect the town's input.
Okay, yeah. Anything that we can do, that La Bella can do to assist with that? You know, we're happy to step in and help Kim or.
Well, we'll have to, you know, our, our hearts were initially into the fact that we thought it would be good to keep it as a piece of property total. We haven't really, I guess, because we haven't had any direction per se, we haven't seriously thought about how we would carve it up otherwise. So I suppose before we do, we should get to the town board, get their no answer, and then proceed accordingly.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
We're set, we're ready.
Anything else from the board? Alex, a resolution here on the sketch plan. Doesn't prove anything except that the sketch plan is complete. Resolution is for Stone Brook subdivision, fourteen oh three East Victor Road, date three twenty-two, twenty-two. Application number zero one S K twenty-twenty-two. Whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are eight. Now therefore be it resolved that regarding the sketch plan application of Jeff Smith, Woodstone Custom Homes major subdivision entitled Stone Brook Sketch Subdivision, drawn by Marathon Engineering, dated February fifteen, twenty-twenty-two, received by the planning board February sixteen, twenty-twenty-two. Planning board application number zero one S K twenty-twenty-two. Planning board acknowledges receipt of a complete sketch plat application. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary forward a copy of this resolution to the applicant. Do you have a motion on that?
Move it.
Scott moves it.
I'll second.
Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got a little bit of work ahead of you, I guess. Well, that was our last item, so I want to entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
You got it, Ernie.